Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Gloucester zoning board of appeals meeting of November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-four. This is going to be held as a hybrid meeting, which means we're meeting in person here at City Hall, and it's also available to the public on Zoom link. For the record, the Zoom link ID number is eight seven eight zero three five six nine seven eight one. I recognize in attendance myself, Joe Parisi, Peter Canavo, James Gilardi, Ronald Wilson, and online Michael Nyman. And I declare we have a quorum. The first will hit the consent agenda. We have need a motion to approve the signing of decisions on Sixth Room Road, one oh five Wingersheek Road, and one oh seven Wingersheek Road.
I make a motion to allow signing of the decisions that Joe just stated.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Gilardi?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. So two of our continued applications, the first one being Simon Densy at fifty-two Taylor Street, and also Three Sixty Properties Mass LLC at one forty-three Essex Avenue. Both of those applications have been continued a couple of times. They're still working on their plans, trying to build a consensus in the neighborhoods of what they could possibly do, and they've asked again for a continuance. Now, I don't see it the way that's going. I don't see any point continuing it to December, but I will entertain a motion to continue it to January, which would be January ninth.
Want to go for January ninth or the latter, the later meeting in January?
Yeah, it is dead of winter. Yep. Go the thirtieth if you want, January thirtieth.
You're going to do them together or separately, Joe?
We'll do the vote together. It's the same applicant, same representative, and we'll do one vote for both, continuing both to the thirtieth.
So I would move approval to continue fifty-two Taylor Street and one forty-three Essex Avenue to our January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five meeting.
Second. Motion made and seconded to continue. Roll call vote.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Gilardi?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Okay, our other continued application was the petitioner James Montanino Jr., appealing the issuance of a building permit twenty-four dash two four eight issued to NSD Real Estate LLC for the property located at one sixty-nine A East Main Street. Is there a representative here? We're gonna, if you're not in the mic, they won't be here. You're at home.
Hi, David Gallagher, Regnante Stario, Wakefield, Massachusetts. I'm here for the property owner, NSD Real Estate LLC.
You're not the applicant.
I am not the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Anyone representing the applicant, if they're at home, you would hit your raise hand bar. I don't see anyone on, at home on this. Do a notify. So we did, we were doing some research on this application, and you all received a memorandum about it, and the big issue for us is the lack of standing to appeal this decision. A building inspector's decision whether to do something or not do something. One is very specific time limits in our zoning ordinance, and also requires someone to be aggrieved, like an immediate rebutter. In this situation, the adjacent property is owned by an LLC that the applicant is a part of, but not the controlling member, and the LLC would be entitled to appeal a decision like this, but not just a member of the public. So there's certainly a lack of standing for Mr. Montanino to bring an appeal of this type to us. With that in mind, I would think, and I know there's been discussions with the city and hopefully to get them to understand that, this is a business dispute, not a zoning dispute. With that in mind, I would think a proper move, although I will, we do have the city attorney on if she wanted to comment, but my intent was to entertain a motion to turn down this appeal based on the lack of standing to bring it. Suzanne, would you be wanting to comment at all, or are we good? Didn't raise her hand. There we go.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Yes, you did receive a memo from the legal department regarding the applicant's or the appellant's standing on this matter, and, you know, our position, and I think we should, we, the board may want to defer to the property owner's attorney who is present there tonight, but there would be a lack of standing as Mr. Montanino is not the controlling member of the LLC and has made no allegation or representation that he has any particular interest in this matter, other than the fact that he may be a part of that LLC. So I think it is appropriate for the boards to deny this. The building inspector properly issued the building in permit in this matter on the basis of this board's decision.
Thank you. With that said, I'll entertain a motion. Michael?
Yeah, I would make a motion. Petitioner James Montanino Jr. Appealing the Issuance of Building Permit BLD twenty-four dash two four eight issued to NSD Real Estate LLC for the property located at one sixty-nine A East Main Street. I would move that we deny Mr. Montanino's appeal of the building, the building commissioner's issuance of the permit, based on the fact that he has no legal standing and he has not been aggrieved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to deny the appeal based on the lack of standing. Roll call vote.
Mr. Gilardi?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Okay, we're moving into our new applications tonight, which we have five. First is the petitioner Happy Tail Shop LLC seeking a use variance pursuant to one point seven and two point three point four subsection six, to have a self-wash dog station at one eighty-six Main Street. Is, on up. You're going to tell us about your project. First, we want, we're going to need your name and address for the record.
My name is Lauren Sucheki. Oh, sorry. My name is Lauren Sucheki, and my shop address is one eighty-six Main Street in Gloucester.
Where do you live?
I live at sixty-two Woodward Avenue in Gloucester.
Thank you. What would you like to do?
So I've just opened a pet supply boutique shop on Main Street, and I want to have one self-wash dog station in the back section of the shop. It's got a half wall, so it's private. It's, it's just, sorry, I should have written everything down. But, yeah, it's, I think that there's a need for it in Gloucester. It will help my business survive the winter. It's not dog grooming. An owner will come in with their dog by themselves, and they will go in, and they will have the bath, and towels will be provided, and they dry them, and then they leave. So it's not like there'll be fifteen dogs in crates all barking at each other that are nervous because they will be accompanied by their parent, and I will be there to assist them if they need help, but it's mostly the owner just washing the dog. And I understand why that section of town, they've zoned it as no grooming because they were concerned about the noise. My landlady put extra soundproofing in around the walls of my shop. All of the neighbors are completely fine with it. I had them sign petitions and told them about the project, and when they probably decided that grooming was not good for that part of town, it was prior to there being such a thing as a self-wash dog station. So, and like I said, it would just be one dog at a time, and they will be calm and collected with their owner. I also have a letter from Dylan Benson, he's the work counselor there, that if you want me to read it, or I can give it to you to read.
You can submit it and put it in the record. Were we able to, probably the people most affected would be in the building, and their, your landlord's obviously okay with it according to the application.
Yes, everybody seemed to support it fully, so.
All righty. You can have a seat for a moment. I'm going to take any public testimony, just to see if there's anybody with anything to say, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application. If you're in the hall on any of these hearings, you please come forward, give us your name and address for the record, and then tell us your thoughts. Or if you're on people online, you hit your raise hand button, and we'll bring you in like we just did previous, and you'll be able to speak on any subject. So anyone wishing to speak in favor of the Happy Tail Shop application, come forward.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lorraine Tomlinson Hall. I do actually live on the same street as Lauren, at eighty-two Woodward Avenue. I'm a friend of Lauren's, but equally, I have watched her build this magical place that is already open. Lauren used to own the last stop on Eastern Ave, East Main Street, sorry, and each time we've walked since I moved to this community, she stopped at least five times every time to say, when is she opening something new? And I can just encourage anybody that is listening online or to the panel that if you've had the pleasure yet to go to this place, she really has taken her life savings and built something magical, and there's a piano, and there's a sofa, and it really is something of a community, and who doesn't love dogs and sitting for a chat and a cup of coffee? So full disclosure that I am her friend, but equally, I'm also a businesswoman, and it really is a massive asset to Main Street. It's beautiful. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the dog washing station? Any opposition? Seeing none? Any discussion by the board? Are we ready for a motion? This is a variance for use, so when you have uses that aren't allowed, you have to allow them by variance. So, yes, Ron.
My sense is that this is a good thing for the business to improve their chance of success, and it is always a steep climb for a small business, and it, in my walkthrough, it looks like it's very self-contained and has represented.
To avoid any problems unforeseen in the decision, it's a dog washing station, correct? We're going to limit it to dogs. You can't wash a horse or a sheep. I think those will be the only things that could cause problems. We'll probably put that in the decision that it is a dog washing station. Anybody else have anything? Are we ready for a motion? Go ahead, Ron.
I would like to move that the application, Happy Tails Shop LLC, for variance of GZO one point seven and two point three point four subsection six, to have a self-wash dog station be approved.
Got to condition anything? Just make sure that's in the decision.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for a use variance. Roll call vote.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Gilardi?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Heard our decision's favorable. We're going to, we'll put a decision together and get it. It'll have to get signed at our December meeting, and then you'll get notification so you can go ahead. You're welcome. Okay, our next application is the petitioner GX dash PH three LLC, seeking a special permit pursuant to one point eight and two point three point four, line nine, for restaurant with outdoor seating or takeout at one Gloucester Crossing, Building C, map two sixty-two lot thirteen. Is there a representative here, an applicant? One thing I noticed was the, in the application, the plan was only of the actual building that this is going in. There was no plan of the whole mall, so I do not know where it was going.
Yeah, I don't think it's adequate, Joe, at all. That was my impression. I'm reading through it and thinking.
But the point is, and nothing, there was no sign on the bill, on where it's going. I checked every building. It says Building C. None of the buildings have letters on them. Now, I guessed where I thought it was. Is it over by, like, where the coffee place is, and then the AT&amp;T, and then it's the next one, right? But nothing on it indicating that that was it, and certainly no way from the application that I could tell that that was it. So I would say we're, especially since no one's shown up, I have no problem if someone wants to motion to continue that.
Yeah, I think we should continue, but we should let them know that the drawings that they've given us so far are not adequate, and if they come back the same way, then we won't, I won't be able to make a decision because I don't know where it is.
For the general public. Right, yeah, I mean, you've got a little piece of, one part of a building, and based on the shape, I kind of guessed where it was, but I really couldn't tell, so. All right. Somebody want to make a motion on that? We'll continue that to December, what is it, the eighth? These guys? You got a bunch on the twelve? All right, so we'll go to, they haven't built it out yet anyway, so. Let's put that one to January ninth. Someone will make a motion.
The petitioner GX PH three LLC, seeking a special permit, a restaurant with outdoor seating at one Gloucester Crossing, make a motion to continue to January ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Gilardi?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, just, I just want to be on record, you know, with that caveat that I said earlier, that I need better drawings if I'm going to be expected to make a decision on January ninth, but yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. So we'll, that's continued. Our next application tonight is the petitioner Two Seventy-two Main Street LLC. They're seeking a special permit, one point ten and four point one, authorizing a lesser number of off-street parking at two seventy-two Main Street, believed represented by attorney
Thank you. Just coming on as a panelist now. Just going to share my screen, and we'll get going. Okay. For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions, an address of one twenty-three Main Street in Gloucester. I'm here on behalf of Two Seventy-two Main Street LLC, the recent new owners of Two Seventy-two Main Street, which, as you may know, is the former Thai Choice Restaurant downtown. So the proposed work is to add a second floor addition to the left side of the existing building and a single-story addition in the rear, but the proposed work, as I get to, is actually driving a parking concern, which is the relief we'll be looking for. By way of background, we are in the CB district. The current use, although it's currently vacant, is a restaurant use, and that use is allowed as a right, and they're allowed to continue it even if it wasn't because it's been less than two or three years from abandonment. So in any case, the issue we have is that we have existing allowed use, we have an existing parking shortage, and when we go to expand out the floor space, we're going to slightly increase the parking requirement, and that's going to wipe out, that's going to wipe out the pre-existing portion, at least as to the new space. As a kind of a mumbly sentence, I'll get back to that. So again, there's no change of use permit. We are in the CB district. There's no dimensional requirements in the CB district. If you have a commercial use like this with no residential component, you have no setbacks. There is a footnote that says if you have a CB property that abuts an R five property, you do have, I think, ten-foot setbacks on the rear or the side, whichever is abutting it. As you can see, we kind of come close, but there is Prospect Square separating us from the R fives. We do not directly abut the R five. So again, the only issue we have here is actually just the parking that's triggered by the expansion of the building by right. And so what we'd like to do is rather than rely on the existing non-conforming parking and just getting the permission for the slight expansion, we figure while we're here, we should just ask for the proper relief for all the parking that would be required if this were a brand-new use and structure. So based on our calculations, we need thirty-five off-street parking spaces. There are ten, including one handicap spot, in the parking lot currently, and so that would be relief of twenty-five units. For usual, I have all the plans here. If there's any questions about any of it, we can certainly go back to it. Again, keeping with the style of the building and just trying to bump out, as you can see, this is the left side you're looking at, and so it's architecturally interesting, but that second level could be more useful if it was to cover the greater floor area of the first floor. And again, just a few shots of the building. So again, the issue here is that we have fourteen hundred square feet of first-floor floor area and a thousand square feet of second-floor floor area, and so that brings us to a current demand of thirty-three total spaces required. There is, if you go through the building file, contemplation that when this was first becoming a restaurant, that some previous owner was going to get relief for those, that delta between the ten they had and what was required then, but it doesn't look like anyone ever closed that loop and actually got the relief, so just kind of been sitting without the relief since then. And so again, we could come here and just say, hey, listen, we're going from thirty-three required spaces to thirty-five required spaces, so all we need is, you know, to, we're just short those extra two because those first thirty-three are, you know, protected by the fact that it's been there so long. But again, our request is not just for those two, it's to go with a full twenty-five so that anyone going forward with this building as renovated will be allowed to continue the use with the ten spaces on premises. And so we are in section four point one point two for our standard of relief, and we basically have to demonstrate that the lesser number of spaces is going to serve the intent of the ordinance and make sure the decreased number of spaces will be in harmony with the purpose and intent, and that there'll be safeguards as necessary to protect the neighborhood and the city. And so during the day, the restaurant mainly serves those that work in the walkable surrounding neighborhood, although I will admit that Applied Materials had a pretty good contingent of Thai Choice lunch diners. I was a Thai Choice lunch diner myself, and there was a lot of Applied Materials. But again, there was never an issue as a successful thriving restaurant for years, and then during the dinner time, there is sufficient parking on this section of Main Street. Again, Gorton's kind of closes down at that point, and there's a lot of daytime shops that close up, and this property is only a hundred and seventy-five feet from the Gloucester Housing Authority lot. Now, I hear that they're looking to develop it, but I've been hearing that for a while, so for now, there's, you know, there's, there's spaces over there, but we can't count those as a municipal lot because someday there could be a housing authority building there. So it doesn't excuse us from that four-hundred-foot, you know, carve-out. And again, I would just argue the insufficient number of spaces will not detrimentally impact the surrounding neighborhood because, again, we had a former restaurant here. This one, like, the proof is in the pudding, right? There was a restaurant here that did lunch and dinner and takeout, and they were very busy, and the parking lot had limited spaces. It would fill up. There was always space on Main Street and the surrounding area, so I don't think granting the relief that's been missing this long with the inclusion of the two extra spaces of relief is going to have any negative impact on the neighborhood or be contrary to the GZO intent. If anything, I think it's great because this is, you know, an area of Main Street that has lagged behind the rest of Main Street in the economic redevelopment that we've been trying to get going, and so this is nice to see that a former restaurant space is not going to be turned into something less productive. It's going to be maintained as a restaurant space and hopefully continue to bring people down to that end. When people go down to that end, they pass by the other shops. It's, you know, I think this actually helps benefit the city, which would be in line with the intent of the zoning ordinance. So that's, I think, just about enough. I thank you. Again, the relief requested is a relief from required parking for twenty-five spaces, twenty-five space reduction. Thank you.
Thank you. I see if there's any public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in favor? Any opposition wishing to speak to the application? Any opposition? Seeing none, discussion by the board?
Nothing changing other than what's being done to the property, but the use is the same, right?
Yeah, it's going to be a restaurant use still. There'll be two hundred square feet more of interior space.
How many more seating will that give it?
That will bring the number, I do have it here. I want to say the occupancy is like ninety-two, something like that, and then, yeah, five hundred square feet of spacing and two persons added to the max capacity, raise required parking to thirty-five spaces. Yeah, so it looks like it's going up by two also. It's very small.
Well, it's certainly run for a very long time as a very successful restaurant. People just wanted to retire, so.
I did the front facade on that building back in the nineties when Cape Town Flooring was right next door, and they owned that building, before it became a Thai restaurant.
They can blame you for the purple?
You can't. I just did what I was told.
Ah, but it's, like I say, it's worked, and if the housing authority ever develops those other lot, they've been talking about it longer than Joel's been alive, so.
I'm glad somebody's doing something with it, you know? I didn't know if it was going to sit there vacant for a long time, and someone bought it, and now they're going to bring it back to life, and I think that's a good, good thing to have down there.
I can make a motion if you want.
I'd like the motion to include the waiver of twenty-five spaces.
I'd move a petition for a Two Seventy-two Main Street LLC seeking special permit. Uh, I'd move the petition for 272 Main Street LLC seeking special permit, uh, to GZO 1.10 and 4.1, authorizing lesser number of off-street parking, and that lesser number would be 25, uh, at 272 Main Street. I would move approval of that. I think the proof is in the pudding. Uh, it's been there for decades. Nobody is in opposition, um, so I think the proof's in the pudding, and I, I don't think it is derogating from the intent of the zoning ordinance, so I'd move approval.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes.
Heard our decision's favorable. We appreciate the draft.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Moving on. Next application is the, uh, petitioner Michael Sussman and Marilyn Arnold, seeking a variances pursuant to 1.7 from sideyard setbacks and distance to the primary structure to construct the shed at 13 Young's Road. Come on forward.
Is the mic on?
Yeah, we got, gotta hear him.
Once again, I'm, I'm Michael Sussman, uh, 13 Young's Road, Gloucester. That's my wife.
I'm Marilyn Arnold, 13 Young's Road, Gloucester.
So, uh, we are seeking permission to erect a prefab shed on our property. Our, uh, home has neither basement nor attic. I have hobbies that include building clocks and restoring old radios, and, uh, Marilyn dislikes the sawdust in the kitchen. Uh, we, uh, looked at potentially building onto the rear of the house. Uh, the plans reflected, um, work towards that. Uh, access is difficult. We could not find a contractor, uh, who was interested in the work, and a, a shed seemed like a, an easy solution, um, to get me out of the kitchen, so. Are there any, any questions?
Okay, um, the only thing I did, I didn't find in the application was the height of the shed to the peak.
So the height of the shed is under 15 feet. The sidewalls of the shed are, uh, seven feet, seven-foot sidewalls?
What was the peak measurement? I couldn't hear you.
Uh, it was, it's, it's under 15 feet. I don't have the exact.
Over 12 feet.
Yes, it is.
So with that regard, we have to give you a height exception, because it can only be 12 feet tall. So, uh, well, you, you're, you're at, you're gonna be asking for variance for sideyard, variance for too close to your main house, and also a special permit for the height. Accessory building can only be 12 feet tall.
Um, I'm gonna have to do geometry on it, because I'm not sure about that 15 feet.
It seemed, so it was, uh, it's 10 by 14. I did the, I did the math. I think it was, so it was, um, looking at the picture that you sent, it looked like a feely, you know? It was hard to tell.
Yeah, I, I.
I just assumed, uh, grant you, if everyone goes for it, grant you the height, so that even if it's 12 foot 1, there's not gonna be an issue. I just think that would be the safest thing to do, um, as long as the board goes along.
Thank you.
Okay? All righty.
I just have one, one question, just for the record. Is there any reason, uh, you couldn't put the, uh, shed behind the house?
So.
Looks like there's space on your lot.
The lot is pretty narrow, and if you look, it's oddly shaped, and the only place that we could see to situate the shed in the back would be in the middle of Marilyn's garden. So, so she has a, a very nice flower garden back there, um, that we did not want to.
Did you speak to the people next door?
Uh, we did. We spoke to Jeff, and, um, it, it, it's on his side of the, of the property, and he was very supportive.
It looked like the, your neighbor's house was set back further than yours, so this is not going to be like, uh, he's back a lot, so it's not gonna be like right on top of them.
That's right. It's, 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 it's inconspicuous. It's in an area where Jeff typically will park his truck.
Good.
Hey, Joe, you, you can give the height exception if you want, but, uh, I mean, I just did the math. Even if it's a 912 or a 1012, he's still only, if he's, if he's starting at seven feet on his, um, sidewalls, he's still only at 11 feet on a 9 or a 1012. 1212, he's only at 12 feet.
Okay. I, I was, I saw the art. I didn't have much of a drawing, so I was looking at the, uh, it was like a dormer, but that's, that doesn't affect the peak, yeah.
Right. Yeah, it's only 10 feet wide, that's why. I mean, so he's only going halfway, five feet, right? And he's, then he's climbing, nine times five is 45 inches, you know, so he's still under 11 feet even on a 912.
Right.
I just don't think he needs a height exception, that's all.
Right. What he meant to say for the record was, when he said 15 feet, it's under 12.
Yeah.
He just misspelled.
He did.
Okay. Anybody else that will, uh, will take public testimony? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application? Anyone in favor? Raise your hand or come forward. Seeing none, is there any opposition to the shed? Any opposition either online or here? Seeing none, we'll close the public testimony, we'll entertain a motion to grant a variance, two variances, one for sideyard setback and one for being too close to the primary structure.
I'll make a motion in favor of petitioner Michael Sussman and Marilyn Arnold seeking a variance, um, 1.7 for a sideyard setback and a distance to the primary structure to construct the shed. I recognize the hardship, shape of the lot, and, um, we don't need it a height. And, uh, for those reasons, I, I approve it.
Second on both variances.
Have a motion made and seconded on two variances. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes.
Heard our decision's favorable. We'll put together a decision, get it signed next month, and out to you, and should be able to move forward from there. Okay, our last hearing of the night is the petitioner is Christopher Simon, seeking a special permit under 1.8, 2.3.1 subsection six, to convert a two-family structure to a three-family at Seven Cleveland Place. Come forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chris Simon. I do live at Seven Cleveland Place on the first floor. I am seeking a special permit to convert my basement into an apartment for my son. The apartment will have two bedrooms, an open space living room and kitchen, and a full bath.
The, um... You're not having to change the building outside at all?
No, there's no changes to the outside structure whatsoever. The only changes will be in the interior and the basement level.
Saw that on the plan. Okay. Questions by the board, or have you heard enough on that one? All right, hang on. We'll, uh, see if there's anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application out there? Anyone in favor?
My wife is.
Any opposition? We have no, no attendees online anymore, so unless she goes against you, we're in good shape, so.
All right.
Certainly, uh, Cleveland Place is a, uh, you know, multi-family area, mixed use. There's some businesses that have been there. There's condos and all different side streets there, well-utilized. Certainly, uh, the need to, um, provide your son his own place, um, is a good thing. And I'm all for it. Anybody else have any comments?
I agree. It's additional housing.
It sounds like a very good idea. I just wanted to ask, is, in Gloucester, do they have a ruling about two means of egress for units?
There is a, uh, a walkout staircase that goes to the backyard, and there's also gonna be two egress windows, one in each bedroom.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, and Ron, that would be, uh, building inspector would, uh, make sure that, you know, all of that net code, uh, when that was, when that was added.
So just so you're also aware, um, not that it's gonna matter that much for their decision, but depending on when you get your permit in to do this, you may have to sprinkle the building. I have a new building code that comes out January 1, and three families are required to be sprinkled.
Oh, here. We'll get this, uh, well, we gotta approve it first, but get it out quick, and maybe you can get your permit before that.
Yeah, let's help him get his permit. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I, the residential sprinklers are not a big deal. It's not like in a building like this. They're simpler, but still, it's another cost you don't need, so, um, unless you choose to, but.
We can get it done before the first of January. Nice.
Any other discussion? We'll take a motion.
I would like to move that, uh, the petition of Christopher Simons for a special permit, GZO 1.8 and 2.3.1 subsection six, to convert from a two-family structure to a three-family structure at Seven Cleveland Place be approved.
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded to approve. Roll call.
So Joe, uh, just a quick question. So are we looking at the standards 1.8.3 for this?
Yeah, so it's a, um, uh, convert with no exterior changes. Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, we can, we can just mention them. I may look through them. There's no issues with the, you know, with the standards of 1.8.3.
Yeah, I'm gonna write this right away, and I'll get it, I'll get all that in.
All right. Sounds good.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, very good project.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes.
We heard our decision's.
Thank you very much.
See what we can do to get you rolling. Thanks. Uh, anybody have any other things they want to bring up?
We just have one meeting.
One meeting in December, and then we go back in January, and then we'll get to elect Peter as the chairman, and. One announcement. Our wonderful board secretary is moving into a new position, and we want to thank her for the work, and she's been doing this for quite a while for us, and done a nice job, and we're all pretty happy and glad she's moving on. We'll have somebody new, we hope, and, uh, you know, maybe we'll get minutes and stuff like that, but.
No good deed goes unpunished.
Anyway.
We're gonna miss you, Allison.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you, guys.
If you told me more than today, I would've bought you some flowers or something, but.
We're getting drinks after, Joe.
I didn't know that was my job.
Anything else? If not, we'll, uh.
Would the chair accept a motion to, uh, we will adjourn?
Yes, we will. Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Roll call.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Prezy?
Yes.
They are officially adjourned. Thank you all.
We will miss you, Allison. Good luck in your new venture.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'll miss you guys, too.
Yeah, she's just moving across the hall.
Night, everyone.